This session of Huntsville City Council is called to order. We welcome all those who are with us tonight and glad you could join us. We will begin with an invocation from Community Chaplain Rosa Toussaint, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Will Culver will lead us in that. Please stand if you are able for the invocation by Chaplain Rosa Toussaint.
Father God, we come into your presence first to thank you for all the great things that you are doing in our life, in our city. We ask you also for forgiveness for the wrong things that we have done. I pray, Father, for every member of this council, for every person that is present here today, for our mayor, and I'm asking you, please, to bless our city and to help us to be united and to put you ahead of everything. Thank you for this day. Thank you for using each of us to be an instrument of your peace. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Face the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Toussaint. Thank you, Mr. Culver. You have received copies of the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 27, 2017. Are there any changes or additions to be made to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved. We have no resolutions or special recongnitions by the mayor or council, no business with outside legal representation. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearings. 6A1 is a public hearing to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution for suspension of licensure for certain taxpayers. Ms. Sergeant will present that for us. Thank you.
Thank you, President Robinson. This is our quarterly suspensions. They've been provided to the council members under seal. There's no additional information to be provided at this time.
Any comments from the public regarding this agenda item? Mr. Timberlake.
Madam President, first of all, Happy Pre-Mother's Day. Ralph Timmerlake, 2117, Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810. Madam President, I rise to contest this because it is my understanding that when you have privacy, it must remain where only that one individual has access to it or it loses its privacy. I know why this city body is one body and the people who are in it, working for them, is a part of that, but so are the citizens. So I believe that if this is brought before the city council and has been presented to all of you, which is more than one person, there is a chance that the privacy has been breached and therefore the protection under that privacy has been obfuscated and absconded from. So to that end, I respectfully ask again that this information be made available to the public as to who the city is believing is not doing their due diligence in keeping the law. And I ask that on behalf as a citizen and as a taxpayer in the city of Huntsville, Alabama, because I need to know also, are my public servants doing their due diligence and not committing malfeasance or misfeasance? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Timberlake. It is my understanding that we never reveal the names of these individuals to protect good name and character. Mr. Riley, would you have anything to add to that?
That is correct, and I believe I've provided Mr. Timberlake with statutory basis for that. We're required to keep that information confidential, and so the information is not made available to the general public.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment with regard to this agenda item? Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Russell. Is there any discussion on part of the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Keith.
Madam President, Ms. Sergeant, and just to give an understanding of the word suspension, suspension could also be, in a sense, understood as probation. Could you just explain that for individuals? I know a lot of people have come to me in the past week about this. Can you give a quick explanation about that?
Yes, Councilman Keith. What this means is these taxpayers have been notified through the correct processes within the state and the city ordinances that there is an issue with their taxes. They have the right to come in, either make whole their tax situation or come onto a payment plan. If they do either of these things, the suspension is just that. It's a notification, and it stands for 12 months, but their business operates as usual.
Exactly.
If there's any issue during that 12 months, they could be suspended unless they come in during the period if it occurs again and make themselves whole again.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions or comments with regard to this item? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two public hearings to be set. 6B1 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance zoning 0.43 acre of newly annexed property lying on the east side of Harris Road and south of Oakwood Road to Residence 1B District. This is to be set for the June 22, 2017, regular council meeting. The chair moves to approve.
Second. Mr. Russell.
Mr. Russell. I'm sorry.
He's seconded.
Oh, Mr. Russell's seconded. All in favor of setting the public hearing, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is set. 6B2 is a resolution to set a public hearing of an ordinance rezoning 3.68 acres lying on the east side of Pulaski Pike and the north side of Stringfield Road from Residence 1A District to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This is to be set for the June 22, 2017, public hearing. The chair moves to set the hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Any discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing is set. We will move on to Item Seven, Communications from the Public. We have a number of individuals who have signed up to speak. You will have three minutes to speak. When I call your name, please tell us your name and your address for the record. We will begin with Rosie Stewart. Subject is land clearing. Is Ms. Stewart here? Please approach the microphone. Thank you for coming tonight. You will have three minutes.
Rosie Stewart, 3607. 3607 Ayers Drive. I'm here to ask the councilman about clearing of the land. It comes in from Stringfield Road, and it has came all the way up to our subdivision. It's just tree land, and it starts from Valladell Road to Canard Drive, from Judd to Ayers Drive, and it ends on Stag Run at Nail Road. And so we just want to know what is the purpose of the land being cleared? And you enter it from Stag Run, I mean, from Stringfield Road at marker seven, 278, and there's a sign that says, "No trespassing." So if someone can just let me know so that our district, our neighborhood, because we're concerned about the land with them coming so close to the tree line. Thank you.
Councilman Keith, did you want to address that?
Yes, ma'am. And thank you so much for coming down. I'm gonna probably get Jim to come down if he can.
I think Michelle had in.
I mean, Ms. Jordan can as well. I'm sorry. So actually, our letters will go out this Friday. We've got a number of inquiries about that. He'll, you know, give you the technical situation we have, but that is not going to be a new housing development. I know a lot of individuals have said that. There's not going to be the new Butler Terrace. Even on that Canard Street where that, sort of, if you see that dirt pile spot, that's absolutely, we will address it, and he'll give you a sort of technical sense. But we have talked with the developers about the issue. But I want to let you know that there will be a letter that will be sent out to everybody on Canard, Judd, and Stag Run, in the back part of Stag Run, that should be coming to you in the mail explaining everything by at least Monday or Tuesday, whatever the mail runs.
Okay. Ayers Drive. How many?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. We're not going to have a conversation with you. You're welcome to talk to Mr. Keith afterwards, but I believe Mr. McGuffey has some more information to share with you, so he may answer your questions as well. Mr. McGuffey?
Yes, councilmembers, this is a piece of property. It's residentially zoned, but it's been purchased by a developer to take dirt out of it, create a pond, and build a pad for a single-family home. We've worked with him to build a landscape berm along the existing houses at the end of those roads so that he will create a nice landscape buffer between the houses and his site. But what he's doing now is clearing dirt, building a nice pond. He's going to build a pad for a house there in the future, a single house.
Thank you for sharing that information. Ms. Stewart, if you would like to meet with Mr. McGuffey, and I think Ms. Jordan said she would also be available to you out in the foyer, they would be happy to have a conversation with you. Thank you very much for coming to be with us tonight. The next person to sign up is Ralph Timberlake. The subject is Huntsville Hospital Due Process. Mr. Timberlake, the time is yours. You have three minutes.
Ralph Timmerlake, 2117, Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810. And first of all, I'd like to wish everyone, mothers of Happy Pre-Mother's Day under the sound of my fever voice. And secondly, I would like to get a clarification because I think I learned that city attorney misunderstood my statement a while ago. I asked about when the chain of custody is broken, does the privacy of that is lost? I do not remember ever having a conversation in this vein with the city attorney. Now, I see on the agenda that two vacancies on the Huntsville Hospital authority is being filled tonight. First of all, under Alabama Open Records Law, I respectfully request to be given the other names that were supposed to be sent because the bylaw required that three names be submitted to this council, and I respectfully receive those other two names to go along with these. And I respectfully ask the council to not vote for these names tonight because these are the same individuals who have failed to make the subcommittee of the Huntsville Hospital Board a public entity of the city of Huntsville, Alabama, which the city, the citizens of Huntsville, Alabama own, is not made public. Now, subcommittee meetings and executive meetings are two separate and distinct meetings under the law, any definition you wish to find. Now, I know that when the hospital board was created, there was some misunderstanding as to what Mr. Connolly had done in Washington, D.C., and I hope this board has the courage of, more so than a Donald Trump, to rectify whatever needed to the extent of fine some of these public servants who willfully refused to comply with the law because it is a bad reflection upon you and especially upon me. I ask that, Madam President, that you take my words under advisement and get it back to me and especially honor my request under the Alabama Open Records Law. Thank you very much.
There's a lot in there, Mr. Timberlake. Let me see if I can unpack some of this. The question with regard to the bylaws do require three nominees sent to the board or sent to the council. Is that public record in fact, Mr. Riley?
I do not. I'm not prepared to respond to that this time. I would have to review the bylaws of that.
If you would review that, we would appreciate it.
Madam President, obviously, I don't want to supersede the attorney, but if it helps any, in the past, all those names were, you know, made public. In fact, at one point, I think they were actually listed on the agenda, and then a council member would make a motion to take Name A, B, or C off the list for each appointment.
That's not the way we've done it tonight, but we could certainly, if someone was to make a request, we could make those names available. Thank you for clarifying that. The next person to sign up is Jackie Reed. Subject is government issues. Ms. Reed, welcome.
Good evening. I want to thank you for laying public input. We appreciate you letting the public get up and do whatever they got to do to you, try to get your attention. Anyway, I want to wish all the mothers a Happy Great Mother's Day. Please go tell your mother that you love her. That's worth more than a gift. Many issues tonight to talk about. Traffic in this city. You keep wanting more traffic in here? Take care of our roads and our traffic. Wrecks everywhere, people running over you, there's no respect on the roads anymore. I would like to see the mayor and you all, each one of you up there, hire 100 more police officers. I don't know what you're doing with all your money, but I want the city employees taken care of. In the airspace business, we take care of employees first and then the people. So I want you to look at that. Maybe you need to go to work for the airspace industry if you ever leave up there. Maybe that would help you a little. The Aquatic Center, I need to ask you about the Aquatic Center and the Scruggs Center. Has that been closed for good? You answered that when I sat down. I was asked by a lady, says she cannot get in the new center down there because the parking's all up front and they have to go a long ways to get in, and they're having a real problem with the handicap down there at the new building. So somebody needs to look into that and see if you can help those people to use that thing, if that's what you set it up for. Anyway, I would like to see two, three items held, 17-364, 365, 17-341. I would like to talk about Channel 42. Is that a social media channel? That's all I see. Every time I turn it on, I'm learning a little about the city, like I go to all the meetings and try to find out anyway, but it's a social media. We don't know where the meetings are held. We don't know when there's a meeting being held. I have a problem with that. I thought that channel was really for government issues, not personnel or personal issues. Anyway, I think it's bad that we don't put some of these meetings on there. I spent two hours yesterday trying to find out where a meeting was going, and something was built over there, knocked the end of the Central Bank Building down over there. And I'd like to know, on the permit, it said the city Huntsville was a developer. Now I've been told there's a bar going in over there. I looked over the road today, and you built all that good old wrought iron and set that man up on a good concrete porch out there, and all I want to know is the cost. That's all I want to know. We built it. We paid part. I want to know the cost. I have a hard time meeting up with the personnel to try to find out the cost of some of this stuff. I guess I'll have to make an appointment, but that's going to be hard, too. And I also want to ask the mayor.
Ms. Reed, your time is up.
But I have one more minute, please.
Are you all in favor of giving additional minutes?
And I want to talk about Bill Kling to ask for a special meeting on California Street. I've heard you all, I know you all passed something already on California Street up there. You're trying to run more traffic into that street right there. But I'm asking you, can you have a public hearing? I called Engineering and Planning. I'd like to see an organization chart so I know who to call anymore. I hadn't seen one of them for about eight or 10 years. But yeah, I'd like to see if you could have a public hearing so we all know where the traffic's headed over on California Street, Kling. If you can, you've done past it, but I can't find out anything from anybody. And I want to ask the mayor, all the employees been moved out of that building next door right here. They've moved over to Bank Building where my son works, I heard. You're not trying to tear that down in a hurry before you go to the governor's office, are you? Hey, I'm watching you real close. I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Could you, Ms. Reed, before you leave the podium, Ms. Reed, before you leave the podium, could you please clarify again the items that you want to have held? I caught one of them.
Well, I'm saying employees next door.
The items that you want to have held?
I got more than that to hold.
What were they?
What I asked, somebody didn't take. Oh, the one I want to help, 17-341, 364, 365.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. And Mr. Ivy, there were some questions regarding the Aquatic Center, parking at the Aquatic Center, accessibility issues.
Yes, ma'am. The Aquatic Center is closed. The new facility is open. It is a construction site. When we opened up, parking was in the back. We have now got the top layer on the parking lot, and we've moved where anybody with disabilities can park in the front and come right in. We've made it shorter distance, ma'am.
Great. Thank you so much. And Mr. Kling?
I don't know what public hearing. I think what Ms. Reed's talking about is a work session. Is that what you want? Okay, I guess, could we have that next time we're having a work session put on the agenda? Discussion of California Street traffic?
And we do have a couple of work sessions coming up.
Okay.
That I will talk with you all about. Okay, got that. Very good. Thank you. The next person to sign up is TC Johnson. Subject is issues. Pastor Johnson?
Good evening. Thank you. Pastor TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkman Drive. Two issues. One deal with some calls I've gotten about impound and impounding procedures and the price that was listed on the current track as opposed to what's being charged to some of the citizens. The other thing, even in that area, dealt with this idea of the contract having lots for general population and then evidentiary cars that have to be kept by the police. The rumor that that contract was supposed to be housed, both of those parking lots, and the rumor is that a parking lot has been provided by the city in a different location, and that I would like to be able to clear up. The other part of that has to do with when an impound vehicle is impounded, at what point under the law does it become abandoned? Because some citizens have been told that in five days, they're being charged an abandonment fee relative to impounding. And if these things are found to be in discrepancy of what the contract says, at what point do we call that person to be held accountable for that? That was the first area. The second deals with a police officer who allegedly was going to his military duty and being paid, but was ever AWOL, and then allowed to just resign even though he'd been paid over $2,000 for whatever, and we just let that person resign. And the complaint comes because these officers who often get away or seem to be let go with these instances, I've been here before about this. These are white officers. In fact, this officer, I'm not calling names, I have them, but for respective families. This officer's father, who was also an officer, went to Tuscaloosa, got drunk, got locked up, and snuck on the back of the hand. But anytime the African-American officer does one little thing, fall asleep at a steering wheel, for example, there's this threat to fire, harsh punishment, suspend it, and it makes it appear, may not be true, but it makes it appear that there's a different standard, and that different standard, I'm sure it's not true, I'm sure we wouldn't do that in Huntsville, but because when it's African-Americans, they get a different punishment than other officers. I've been here before about that. Even when officers were planting drugs on people, and we found one officer guilty, both were let to resign. One appealed. We didn't retry the person. They're gone. Records are good, and people that are here are affected, have scars on that record for the rest of their life. And so I don't want to call those names that I was inquiring about, but I do have them. And so it deals with those issues tonight. And I really don't want, Chief and I get along well. May I have one?
Pastor Johnson, your time is up. Does anyone have an objection? But Pastor Johnson, I would caution you, you're making a lot of very unfounded allegations, and I would caution you against that.
I'm asking you to found them, though. That's what I'm asking. These are questions that citizens and police officers are asking, by the way. So I'm asking the leaders of the city to look into these matters, and let's make the record straight, if the record can be, and I appreciate your caution.
Do you have an extra minute?
That's why I didn't call, thank you so much, that's why I didn't call, didn't call a name. These are things that I get. They don't come to you, they come to me. So I come to you because we elected you to handle these particular issues, as you often do with me. You straighten me out. But I have no fear, which the public does have, and reluctance to come down because nobody out there can fire me except our congregation. That's the only person I have to worry about, and I don't worry about that. But someone has to speak for these voiceless citizens, Ms. Robinson, that's what I do all the time. It's not about me, I can handle my stuff, but this is about citizens who feel like they need someone to speak for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. We're not going to comment on personnel issues, but we can answer questions regarding the impound lots. Chief Harris, would you like to take that?
Thank you, President Robinson. This is the Police Department question. City ordinance be amended. Chapter 17, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 4, offenses against public peace and order, Division 1, by adding Section 17-104, Police Department firing range, and Section 17-105, Police Department evidence, and empowerment, storage, lot facility. Basically, this is opposing.
The question was, that's another issue.
I'm sorry.
We'll be there, we will be there in just a minute. This was a question with regard to the impound lots, that there are separate impound lots for evidentiary cars and others. Can you clarify for us how impound lots are handled?
Yes. We have separate locations because we have some that are maybe set aside for evidence and purpose held by the investigators, and then we have different lots that we impound vehicles just for general causes, accidents or something like this. So we have two different locations that we may place vehicles. One is an empowerment lot that's secure, and one is a contract lot that we just have general towing.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Madam President.
Thank you, sorry.
Mr. Culver?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, chief. And Pastor Johnson, this also was brought to my attention, and if I understand correctly, and it may require some research, but I do believe that the empowerment contract called for the empowerment company to store all of their vehicles in one area, and there was no concession for a storage area for vehicles that were being investigated. All of those were to be contained in a secured area. Now, a lot of complaints have come to me that, you know, this contract is being modified to some degree, and I'm going to task, chief, your department and Ms. Sergeant's department to go back and look at that contract because I'm getting complaints from citizens that they're being charged, not just for the empowerment, which is $35, they're being charged if they have to roll a window up, if they have to sweep up glass. They're charging people, and I had a gentleman that I spoke to today that ended up with about $800 in cost, and it all wasn't attributed to, you know, storage. I mean, we know that by law, they're able to, you know, charge a reasonable amount for storage, but the issue is whether or not this particular company is following the contract that they received for empowerment, and are they gouging our taxpaying citizens?
Yes.
So, you know, this parking lot that we've created for vehicles that are under investigation, you know, we, to my knowledge, never had any such thing, and it appears, and I don't know if it's true, I'm only relaying what has been relayed to me, and this is why I'm asking the questions, that we erected that parking lot across from municipal court, and I blatantly told this particular citizen, I said, "No, we use that for storage of police vehicles." But they, you know, really insisted that that is an area where we are storing vehicles on behalf of this empowerment company. So if you could have someone to look into that.
That's not true. The vehicles that we're storing across the street at 815 Will, or across the street from 815, are actually vehicles that are under investigation, some type of investigation, and we store only those vehicles there, but by contract, we store just general tolls at that one location with that particular vendor or that company.
Yes.
But those vehicles are under investigation by our investigators, and that's what's stored over there. General towing or general empowerment is per the contract, and I can refer some of this over to Legal. He may be able to explain a few things because he was part of that amendment of that contract in reference to our evidence lockdown, but that was just a way of reducing some of the fees that we were getting.
Mr. Riley, would you like to add to that?
Councilman, we certainly, it's difficult to respond to a general Councilman, we certainly, it's, it's difficult to respond to a generalized complaint. I would suggest, for instance, if a citizen believes they have been treated unfairly or if they have been charged in a manner which is not in accord with the resolution that was passed granting this contract, that that information be provided for us in, in connection with the Police Department. We would certainly look into that to determine that the agreement and the contract with that vendor is being followed, so.
Mr. Culver, would you like to meet with Mr. Riley and the Chief perhaps, and provide that information?
Yes, what, what I will do then, Madam President, if, if it's okay, is we'll have that submitted in questions or inquiries and then we can address them, your department and other applicable departments.
Councilman Culver.
Yes, sir, Chief.
We have looked at a few complaints, and I will look into this as well. I'm over that department, so I will look into that.
All right, sir.
First thing I.
Great, sir. Thank you so kindly.
Yes, sir.
Counselor, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you all for your conversation on that. The next person to sign up is Derek Palmerance. Subject is adding more cycling trails and a bike park in the city. Mr. Palmerance. Please give us your name and address for the record also.
Derek Palmeric, two thousand four Willis Road Southeast, Huntsville, three five eight oh one. Good afternoon. My organization is the North Alabama Mountain Bike Association, which is a nonprofit youth development organization. Has a goal of supporting our student athletes on the state and soon to be national level. These kids have a great need to see a bike park, including new trails in the city of Huntsville. The Alabama League currently has four local teams with over eighty student athletes representing more than twenty-nine local schools. In two thousand eighteen, we expect to form two additional teams with more schools. Our mission is to provide leadership, support services, financial assistance for the local teams to participate in quality mountain bike events and to educate every student athlete in the development of a strong body, strong mind, strong character through the lifelong sport of cycling for all school age youth in northern Alabama. Our goal is to support many requirements that the new Alabama Interscholastic Cycling League teams that have formed and are still forming in our area, the city of Huntsville. The Alabama League's goal is to recruit and develop combined high school and middle school mountain bike teams for both boys and girls, grades six through twelve throughout the state of Alabama. Our organization and the Alabama League work together to provide every student athlete an opportunity to improve their cycling skills and achieve success at their level of ability from novice to expert, all under the guidance, regulations and events hosted by the National Interscholastic Cycling League. Locally, our organization worked with the U.S. Space and Rocket Center to revitalize their existing park trails, their infrastructure, and we enhanced this and increased the rideability of the trails they had existing from three point five miles to six miles. The catalyst for this project was to provide our youth with a safe trail system appropriate to their skill levels for race conditioning and practice. We also greatly desire to host one of the state races on our home field. And in two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, our dream became a reality and the space race drew over one thousand people for three days both years. We believe that a partnership between the city of Huntsville and our cycling community, represented by many like-minded trail bikers, trail runners, hiking enthusiasts in the city, could mutually benefit its citizens by identifying properties that can be reused and redeveloped with minimal funds, enriching the local economy and giving our families and individuals new venues for outdoor recreation.
Mr. Palmeric, your time is up. Would you like an additional minute?
Yes. In the nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties, soccer quickly went from being a club, high school sport, to a varsity level sport in Alabama. One by one, high schools picked up the sport and created varsity teams. In response to this, the city of Huntsville built soccer parks all over the city in an effort to give these club teams and high school teams locations to practice. The same rapid growth is occurring with this classic sport of mountain biking in Alabama. Currently, the city does not have any designed or planned space to accommodate the mountain bike club teams. We have had to rely on existing trails on Montesano State Park and the U.S. Space and Rocket Center for practice locations. I'm going to skip, skip ahead a little bit. Bike parks are practice locations for my organization, for the club teams, the schools, middle schools and high schools. They can be connected with greenways.
Mr. Palmeric, your time is up.
Thank you.
But I think we've certainly heard some great information. Let, may I share with you, I, I, last month had, was invited by the Land Trust to take a look at a proposed trail that will go from Ditto Landing under the west, under the Whitesburg Bridge, to the Arsenal Fence. It will then run along the Surisment, along the Arsenal Fence, all the way to the New Grissom. And you, some bikers rode it and said it would be a great trail, so that is in the process of being developed. If that is developed, it would permit bikers to go from Grissom down to Ditto and then hook up with the hub trails there, which are being cut, which potentially will go all the way up to Montesano. Those projects are being planned and I, it would be great to get your input on those. I would love to connect you with the Land Trust folks and the folks at Ditto to take a look at, at those.
Sure.
We would love to.
Great. We've got your contact information here and, and we'll, we'll make that connection. Any other comments from anybody? The next person signed up is Pat Sanders. Also, more cyclist trails. Welcome, Mr. Sanders. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Pat Sanders. My address is one zero two seven zero Melanie Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three five eight oh three.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to follow up with what Derek had just proposed, from a parent's point of view. My son, Dawson, is a student at New Century and has dyslexia, I'll get that in a second. But two years, two and a half years ago, he'd never really been on a mountain bike. He played other sports and is on a mountain, started mountain biking with this program and has truly excelled. He has an IEP in school and has dyslexia and has had, had a hard time. I just had a meeting last week and he is no longer, he had no help this past year. He's getting a full degree and he's done great. He's always thought, had the mindset that he pretty, could not go to college. But based on the work he's done and excelled at his mountain biking, he actually had a scholarship offer. He got second in the state in the, in the varsity and he's done very, very well. I've seen his confidence grow, I've seen this organization really work with kids at all levels. And it's been a blessing to us, it really has. So I just wanted to come here and just offer my support as a parent and to the benefits of the biking and the community that it's offered to him. And, and the schools too. I really, I guess, I can't say enough good things about New Century, I'll plug that in there too, they've done a great job. But it has been great for him and he has really enjoyed it. And now he's talking about going to college and riding bikes in college. And so it's just been a benefit to him. But that was my input, that I wanted to bring that to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. You have been a great advocate for the biking community. I've enjoyed our conversations in the past. And again, there's a lot of work going on out there with bike trails. I think that it would be really good to get you connected with some of those folks. The next person to sign up is Mary Ann Swanstrom. Adding a bike park and urban trail system to our city. This is definitely bike night. Welcome, Ms. Swanstrom.
Thank you so much, Mary Ann Swanstrom, twenty-nine thirty High Mountain Road, Huntsville, Alabama, three five eight one one. Dear Mayor Battle and members of the Huntsville City Council, if you have enjoyed walking or running on Montesano's more than forty miles of trails, it's largely because of work by members of Sorba Huntsville. Most recently, our chapter organized two hundred volunteers to remove dozens of downed trees from and restore Montesano State Park trails following the December third tornadoes. WHNT TV chronicled this work and that added up to more than a thousand volunteer hours that day. I am president of, of this organization and we are a five oh one C three nonprofit. We quietly work to improve our community's quality of life while enjoying our sport of mountain biking. Now, we wish to offer our talents, time and treasure in support of the building of a bike park and urban off-road trail system in Huntsville. We have a stellar reputation with our partners, the Land Trust of North Alabama, Montesano State Park, Forever Wild, NICA, the North Alabama Mountain Biking Association, and Huntsville Track Club are wonderful partners of ours. As part of the growing movement on our nation for outdoor rec, Sorba Huntsville has been partnering with lay managers and volunteers to continue the build and maintenance of safe, sustainable, multi-use trails here. Our organization is a chapter of EMBO, the International Mountain Bike Association. I'm going to skip on down. Our chapter is about four hundred members strong. We fulfill a critical role in outdoor recreation and this is why we need a bike park in Huntsville, as opposed to a trail system, so we'll both learn something tonight. To accommodate a wide range of abilities from toddlers on Strider bikes all the way to experienced mountain bikers, to provide riders with challenging, interesting and progressively difficult features to develop skills. These are essential if they're ever going to use the greenways and the roadways in our city. To increase public recreational opportunities, increase fee-based revenues and deter unauthorized trail building and have more wholesome family fun activities for our community. So you don't have to have virgin force to make a great bike park. You can use underserved city municipal lands, utility corridors, industrial areas, closed landfills, abandoned rail sidings, any marginal lands, or existing parks that require a useful new purpose. Now, here's the part that might get your attention. The economic benefits are great. There's a very low cost to implement, maintain, and particularly if you utilize volunteer labor, of which we have plenty. You have high returns for low cost and promotes tourism and enriching the community with hotels, restaurant receipts, retail, all of this. And there was, Knoxville is a city comparable size to Huntsville. They've, they're in development of an urban wilderness trail system. They predict that in their economic impact study that they have a local direct economic benefit of over eight million dollars annually, with indirect multiplier benefits adding six million totaling fourteen point seven million annually. That's local. If you look at it as a regional impact, the figure nearly doubles. I'll be happy to share that study with you. So this is why our chapter greatly desires the opportunity. May I have another minute?
Swanstrom, your time is up. Any one objected? Thank you, Ms. Swanstrom, you have another minute.
Okay. So what we would like to do is, we would like to be able to have a park in a couple of years so that we can host the EMBO Sorba Regional Summit. It's a three-day conference bringing delegations from forty-two chapters in seven southern states, along with leaders in the industry and media representatives. And much like the recent T-Bex Conference, the summit would be the perfect opportunity to show off our city and its newest jewel, an urban bike park and trail system. Bike parks are already booming. They're underway in Knoxville and Chattanooga, Anniston, many cities that, that we look to for ideas as well. There's an underutilized property in our city that would make a spectacular park and trail system should it chose not to be reduced to its original purpose, and that is the Becky Pierce Golf Course. So my thank yous to Mayor Battle, Huntsville City Council, for your time this evening to hear my request. I would like to share more with you if possible and thank you to all who came and supported this evening as well.
Thank you for being with us. Thank you for making us smarter. We've learned a lot tonight about bike trails and bike parks. We appreciate it. That's our last person to sign up. We do however have with us tonight a group of scouts who are here. We welcome you, we welcome your leaders. Would you please introduce yourselves to us?
All right. I am Garrett McClellan, the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop Three Forty-three in Owens Crossroads, Alabama. We're with Cove United Methodist Church and today we are here to work on the Communications Merit Badge.
We are glad that you are here. Welcome. We hope you learn a lot. That was a good conversation for you to hear about those bike parks and bike trails. Maybe you can follow up on that. That concludes our communications from the public. We have no Huntsville Utilities items. We will now move on to item nine, Board Appointments. Nine A one is a resolution reappointing Bhavani Kakani to the Healthcare Authority of the city of Huntsville for a term to expire April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. This was, Ms. Kakani was nominated at the April twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen Regular Council Meeting. The board, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Is there any conversation or discussion about this?
Can we give the other two names that were brought to us for consideration?
I do not have those in front of me, but anyone else, anyone who wishes to see those could certainly request them. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of approving Ms. Kakani, reappointing Ms. Kakani, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine A two is a resolution reappointing David Smith to the Healthcare Authority of the city of Huntsville for a term to expire April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Nominated April twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen at the Regular Council Meeting. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine A B, Board Appointment Nominations. Nine B three is a nomination of Todd Slimon for appointment to the Industrial Development Board of the city of Huntsville for a term to expire May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three. Item nine B four is a nomination of Drew Tutte for reappointment to the Industrial Development Board of the city of Huntsville for a term to expire May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. And these will be presented for approval at the May twenty-fifth Council Meeting. Item ten is approval of expenditures, a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling, would you like to make the report of the Finance Committee?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Move for payment of vouchers in the amount of five million nine hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, communications from the mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to see if we could let Ms. Sargent give us some update on the.
Ms. Sargent, would you like to give us an update on expenditures and financials?
Yes, year to date for sales and use, we are tracking right where we should be with the budget. We are, we have received in just over eighty-nine million dollars, which is right where we expected to be at this point for the end of April.
Thank you, Ms. Sargent. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Sargent? Anything else from the Finance Committee, Mr. Kling?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item number eleven, communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. May is National Preservation Month and Huntsville is celebrating that in a big way. Each of the council members are, are designating their This Place Matters places in campaigns for buildings that have been repurposed and reused and renovated so they're of better purpose for the, for the community. We have named three so far. We have named the Lumber Yard, Campus Eight Oh Five, and the workplace, working, workplace over at the old West Huntsville School. And we have one more to go from the mayor's office. I think the council members have a couple more left to go. So I think it's a great way of saying that we value the history of our buildings and we take those buildings and turn them into something that is pretty neat. And that's been a, been a great thing. We've had a great time with it, with this. On May sixteenth at Campus Eight Oh Five, we will have Cheryl Morgan from Auburn University and she's going to give us a special preservation, presentation about preservation and placemaking, how celebrating our history can enhance our future. Cheryl is a well-known person throughout Alabama who has done a lot of what I would call placemaking, taking older buildings, repurposing them and making them something that turns into something that's an asset for a city, city or county or an area. And immediately following presentation will be a panel led by Donna Castellano. So I'd suggest that everybody look, it ought to be, it ought to be a great presentation. And we want to thank all the sponsors for, for the book club. We sponsor a book club each year for kids who are Title One, in Title One schools for, who are either kindergarten or pre-kindergarten or first grade. And we've had, we, this year we're able to give them each four books to take home. Over the years, they can build up a library of fourteen to twenty books. And it gives them something to read at home. So it's a great thing to do for the community and this, this community kind of gathers around and puts money in so that we can buy the books. And it's been a great thing for, for us to be able to do. And you see those young, young people's smiling faces as they leave, leave school with four books and something to read. It makes a lot of difference and it helps in the literacy fight that we have every day. So thank you to everybody who helped in that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. We will now proceed to item number twelve, communications from the council. We will begin with Councilman Devin Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. And just to quickly piggyback, May twenty-first is my This Place Matters. It will be at Saint Bartley. I mean, people know Saint Bartley is actually the first African-American Baptist church in the state of Alabama. I think it stretches back to, I can't remember, I want to say eighteen thirty or eighteen forty. But that would be May twenty-first at Saint Bartley at three P M. But, you know, quickly want to move, use this time just to say thank you, as I always do, to the people who are from the seventh floor down. They get paid, they get paid the big bucks. And right now I want to brag on Joy and the Green Team and Chris and Doc. This past weekend, we had our D one cleanup and it was a success beyond success. People showed up on time. I just loved it. We had breakfast, we had hot dogs, we had over a hundred and something people. I think to date, I think we cut, I want to say fourteen yards. And if Ms. Opal is watching, I know we have more to do. But we got to about fourteen yards of individuals who needed it and we shared a lot of information. We also partnered with a wonderful organization called Raising Men's Lawn Care. And I got a chance to really just meet some of the constituents in a way I've never met them before and be informed about some of the streets. It was just a. It was just wonderful, and I can't say enough to Joy and Chris and Doc. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And finally, I do want to say, as I always do, to the troop and the troop scout masses that are here, as I'm piggybacking off of, you know, our D1 cleanup, I was a member of Troop 102. Those individuals were actually out there cleaning up Blue Springs Road with me. I know I was a knucklehead when I was back trying to get these merit badges, and I, you know, still am a knucklehead, just now sitting, you know, behind the dais. So I just want to say hats off to you guys who have volunteered their time, and just know that, you know, it's gonna pay off. They might not be able to say thank you enough, but it's gonna pay off for the volunteer times that you guys put in to help these young men grow as men. And to the young men who are growing, enjoy that leadership and enjoy the camaraderie and friendship that you have in your troop. So thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Keith. Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, as you well know, I'm on the Huntsville Sports Commission, and this weekend we have a very busy weekend. We have 32 high school soccer teams playing here for the state championship, and we have several local teams in it. Pope John Paul II girls won their game, so they'll be in the championship, I believe, tomorrow night, and Randolph was playing when I left. We also have 50, over 50 soft, high school softball teams playing at Metro Quanis, so we have a lot of student athletes here in town, and we're real proud to be able to host them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Russell. Councilman Kling.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, this is gonna be an eventful week for our family. My father-in-law, Tangi's father, Andrew Lyon, is gonna be 92-years-young on Tuesday, and that's quite a special occasion, but that's not all. Sunday, he and Elizabeth are gonna be celebrating their 69th wedding anniversary, and I don't think anybody at this rostrum here is 69-years-old, so that's quite a, quite an achievement. And certainly want to wish, wish them the very best, and they've been great parents-in-laws, and just wish them the very best for the upcoming week. Couple of things that have taken place this past couple of weeks. It's my pleasure to represent the City Council and to meet and greet Mike Shaw from the Hoover City Council. I came up to the Japanese festival. I think I missed Mayor Battle by about 10 or 15 minutes. But Mike, his special distinction is the fact that he is the District Four Representative from Hoover, so I was glad to, to meet one of my cohorts, and we kind of compared a few notes on things, and we both are proud of our communities, and a lot of, lot of good, good time and good communication with him. As Mayor Battle had said, the This Place Matters recognitions took place for West Huntsville Elementary School and for Stone Middle School. And Mayor, as I said at the time, a great investment that you've done in the central part of the city. I think any city can grow outward, but it's a true test of a city is how it grows inward and the investment that's been made. And I certainly give you a lot of credit for the great things that have happened with those two schools and working with the school system to come up with neighborhood-friendly outcomes. And piggybacking off of that, tomorrow, we're gonna be recognizing McThormore Acres for their great work that they have done. McThormore Acres is located near UAH, and not many people realize it, but it is sort of a hotbed of where a lot of the Von Braun space team, NASA engineers, lived when they were working on the moon program during the 1960s. And there's been a great effort that's been done by the Neighborhood Association, so I'm looking forward to going out there, and I think we're seeing some great things that are taking place in that neighborhood. And appreciate Jessica White for her emphasis that she's been placing on, you know, supporting neighborhoods and recognizing them for their, their good work. Also, this past week, the council met with the Madison City Council and members of the County Commission, along with the Mayor Battle and Mayor Finley of Madison, with leaders from UAH, and just to get an update on what's happened at UAH. And as a former student who went out there during my junior year, about 40-years ago, every time I go back to that campus, it's just awesome to see what's happened, and it has definitely gotten big. I think it's gone from like 3,800 students to right now they're pushing 9,000 and probably will pass 10,000 students in, in the near future. And one last note, I'll be having my monthly town meeting this Monday night, 6 o'clock at the library, and everyone, especially Ms. Reed and Mr. Timberlake, are welcome to come. Look forward to seeing y'all. And again, that's Monday night at 6 o'clock. And that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
And for the record, did Councilman Kling say that your junior year was four years ago or 40 years ago?
No comment.
Thank you, Councilman Kling. Councilman Culver.
Thank you, Madam President. We're not gonna discuss age since I just had a birthday, May 3, so thank you all for your...
Happy belated birthday.
...wishes. Thank you. Mayor Battle?
30 or 29?
Thirty-two plus a little bit. I want to just thank this gentleman and the young lady who commented on the trails. I say to you, Huntsville, if you haven't visited some of the trails, you're missing a real treat. And I want to thank you all for cleaning up Montesano. I run with Sherwood Park Trail Cluts, and we run on Sunday afternoons, and if you've never run on a trail, it can be a challenge because you've gotta use those stabilizing muscles in your legs and calves and all of that good stuff, but it's a great place to, to just get back to nature and enjoy the beauty of the mountains and, and the other, you know, lands that we have here in Huntsville in Madison County. I had something else I wanted to share with you. Boy Scouts, listen, thank you guys for what you're doing. I just wish that where I lived, I could have been a Boy Scout, but I live so far in the woods that there weren't any Boy Scouts. In fact, I lived so far in the woods that a bear was my mailman. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Culver. South Huntsville will be celebrating a Super Saturday on May 20. Like Councilman Keith, we will be holding a neighborhood cleanup. We have six neighborhood associations that have agreed to be part of that process. Green Team has been a wonderful partner. They will be setting up at 8 o'clock in the Grissom High School parking lot and distributing supplies all morning long for people who want to come pick up garbage bags, gloves, picker-uppers, and all kinds of other good stuff to go out and do work in their neighborhoods. Our focus is going to be on neighborhood entrances, cleaning up neighborhood entrances, cleaning up curbs and gutters. Ms. Joy has agreed to, to make copies of the ordinance that lets residents know that they are in fact responsible for those, caring for those curbs and gutters, and so we will take care of curbs and gutters. Anyone who is an apartment dweller or from outside of South Huntsville who wants to be part of that day can join us at Ditto Landing, because we will also be doing cleanup at Ditto Landing. There will be opportunities there. When we did our special Ditto Landing Cleanup Day in April, we spent a lot of time working on miles of new trails that have been cut there, those great running, walking, biking trails, and they have cut more trails since then, and they are desperately in need of people to come and help work on those trails and do some other work at Ditto. So that also will be part of the Cleanup Day on May 20 for those who feel like their neighborhoods are already in really good shape. Following that cleanup that morning, so that morning from about 8 to 12, we'll be doing the, the South Huntsville Cleanup, starting at 3 o'clock that afternoon on May 20 at the Rosie's Plaza. We will, the South Huntsville Business Association will be sponsoring its second annual Spring Fest. So the merchants there in the plaza, as well as vendors from throughout South Huntsville, will be gathering there. There will be giveaways, door prizes, food and drink, and Cosmic Mama will also be there to provide entertainment. Last year's event was fabulous. So it's a great way, after you've cleaned up in the morning, to come and relax and enjoy the afternoon, starting at 3 o'clock at Rosie's Plaza. The South Huntsville Business Association will also hold its regular meeting on May 16 at 3 o'clock. The focus of this meeting is going to be a discussion about the repurposing of the existing Grissom site. Grissom is soon going to be vacating the site on Bailey Cove and moving to its new home west of the Parkway, and this will be an opportunity to hear from all of those folks who are going to be involved in the repurposing of that site as the ballfields are transferred over to the city. The gyms, the auditorium is going to be managed by Arts Huntsville, and the new library will be in that location. So this will be an opportunity to take a look at those designs and hear from, from those folks about those exciting plans. So that will be May 16 at 3 o'clock at the Doubletree. Also, just wanted to thank everyone for their patience with the lane changes and redirection that's gone on at the Martin Road overpass as the Bird Spring Bridge and the Logan Bridge and the main line are reconstructed. That little bit of redirection should just go on now for about four more weeks. It has worked probably more smoothly than we had thought it would, so we are grateful for that, and that's just been because of the cooperation of a lot of people. But it's been very interesting to see how that flow has changed, and, and we continue to ask everybody for their patience as we work through that. And finally, many thanks to the scouts who are here. We are glad that you're here. We're glad that you can see government in action, and we hope that you see all the opportunities that you can be involved, whether it's joining us to clean up neighborhoods or being part of the process of making those bike trails happen. And a special thank you to your leaders. My son was a scout, and I am so grateful to the leaders who were examples to him, who gave him opportunities to learn leadership, and thank you for the time you are investing in these young men. It will pay off in their futures. That's all communications from the council. We will then move on to item number 13, Unfinished Business Items for Action. Item 13A is ordinance number 17-304 annexing 2.63 acres of land lying on the north side of Governor's West and north of Interstate 565. This was introduced at the April 27 Regular Council Meeting.
Move to approve the ordinance?
Second.
Motion from Mr. Russell, second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Nichols.
This annexation request is approximately 2.63 acres. It's located on the north side of Governor's Drive and north of Interstate 565. It is currently an existing commercial building on the property. This building will be removed, and a new commercial building will be constructed in its place, and the property owner would like to annex in order to access city services.
Questions for Ms. Nichols. Any comments? All in favor of approving the ordinance, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. 13B is ordinance number 17-305, annexing 96.20 acres of land lying on the north side of Paul Drive and west of Old Big Cove Road, introduced at the April 27, 2017 Regular Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Chair moves for approval. Is there? Second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Nichols.
This annexation request is approximately 96.2 acres. It's currently a single-family home that's located on this property. It's located on the north side of Paul Drive and on the west side of Old Big Cove Road. The home will be removed, and a proposed subdivision has been proposed for this particular property.
Any questions for Ms. Nichols? Comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13C is ordinance number 17-306, annexing 2.06 acres of land lying south of Hobbs Island Road and south of Railway Lane. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Keith. Ms. Nichols.
This annexation request is currently vacant land. This property is approximately 2.06 acres. It's located south of the Butler Basin property. This property is on, is south of Hobbs Island and, excuse me, south of Hobbs Island Road and south of Railway Lane. This property will be an addition to the proposed Riverside at Butler Basin subdivision.
Any questions for Ms. Nichols? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 13D is ordinance number 17-307, adopting and approving the standards of apprenticeship developed by the City of Huntsville Water Pollution Control Department for the position of water pollution control utility worker at the wastewater treatment plant introduced at the April 27, 2017 Regular Council Meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Motion from Mr. Culver, second by the chair. Mr. Cook.
Councilmembers, thank you for, thank you for considering this tonight. As y'all are well aware, water pollution control comes under federal and state regulations. Those regulations require certain certifications on the collection system side and the operations side, and this apprenticeship program will make certain that the employees we're getting in on the entry level have the skill set necessary later on to pass those required tests. They will take a work keys test prior to their application, and we have done studies with Calhoun to make sure that those work keys apply to this particular position. They will come in, have milestones of CDL license. They will be, Calhoun will be coming in to teach them a class once a week. At the end of that timeframe, they will start taking state certification for the lowest level of collection system operations. There are multiple more milestones in there, which include CPR and other safety training that we teach in-house already. At the end of this process, all these apprentices will, if they make it through the apprenticeship program, will be at the base level mandated by State Alabama Department of Environmental Management to go forth with future endeavors at Water Pollution Control.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cook? Mr. Culver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate you sharing that information with us. I know you and I talked privately about that at one time. So once they successfully complete this apprenticeship, and these are employees with the City of Huntsville, do they advance within the department? Is it automatic, or do they still have to compete for further advancement?
They would. While they're in the apprenticeship program, they would be under the title of wastewater utility worker, or WPC wastewater utility worker, I think is the correct term, Councilman, and at the end of that, we would have a Operator One position, which is basically would be the lowest level of collection system operators in our system. So yes, or at the end of it, they would transition into a, a different job category. Correct?
Great. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Cook? All in favor of approving the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to item 14, New Business Items for Introduction. The following items will be considered at the May 25 Regular Council Meeting. 14A is an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus equipment to be sold at auction per agreement with Mars LLC. 14B is an introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 17 offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Article 4 offenses against public peace and order, Division 1, generally by adding Section 17-104 Police Department firing range and Section 17-105 Police Department evidence and impoundment, storage lot and/or facility of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama. Again, these items will be considered at the May 25 Council Meeting. Moving on to item 15, New Business Items for Consideration or Action. Are there any items any council member wishes to hold for separate consideration?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Culver.
15H as in hotel, M as in Mike, Y as in Yankee, please.
15H, 15M, 15Y. Are there any other items?
15D.
15D.
D is in dog.
D is in dog. Got it?
And N. 15N, Madam President.
15M?
N as in Nancy.
N. Any other items? The chair wishes to hold 15Z, and then I believe we also had, well, 15Z. So items 15, D, H, M, N, Y, and Z. D, she's not hearing. D, H, M, N, Y, and Z. 15A is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. 15B is an ordinance amending Budget Ordinance Number 16-659 by changing appropriated funding for various departments and funds. 15C is an ordinance amending Budget Ordinance Number 16-659 by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. 15E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement among the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency and the Alabama Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area and the City of Huntsville Police Department in the amount of $352,864 for the fiscal year 2017 HIDTA grant. 15F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Integra Corporation doing business as Hexagon Safety and Infrastructure for ILEADS up... for ILEADS upgrade to WebRMS for the Huntsville Police Department. 15G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a temporary construction easement and agreement between the City of Huntsville and JABAS Development LLC. 15I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a license agreement between the City of Huntsville and Baron Services, Inc. for Baron Threat Net. 15J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for periodic bid for concrete work to 2017 project number 71-17-SP07. 15K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Volker, Inc. for engineering design services for State Road 255 widening and interchange improvements, project number 71-17-RD02. 15L is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Geo Solutions LLC for construction materials testing services for Aldridge Creek Greenway Extension, project number 65-16-WP01, and AlDOT project number TAPHV-TA14952. 15O is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek a forfeiture of the surety bond issued by Platt River Insurance Company. 15P is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke BB&amp;T letter of credit number 1293 for Pavilion Phase Two subdivision. 15Q is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Bancorp South Bank letter of credit number 362-0008-11842 for Legend Wood subdivision. 15R is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Bancorp South Bank letter of credit number 362-0008-47746 for Grand Highlands Estates Third Edition subdivision. 15S is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Service First Bank of Credit, letter of credit number 16244 for Preserve at Clayton Pond, Phase Two subdivision. 15T is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Service First Bank, letter of credit number 16155 for Preserve at Clayton Pond, Phase Two subdivision. 15U is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank, letter of credit number 831251823 for Grand Lake subdivision. 15V is a resolution authorizing clerk treasurer to invoke Bancorp South Bank, letter of credit number 362-000879154 for Silo Hill at McMullen Cove subdivision. 15W is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Progress Bank, letter of credit number 9000351800 for Southgate subdivision, Phase Two. 15X is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Progress Bank, letter of credit number 9000368300 for Southgate subdivision, Phase Three. 15AA is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Huntsville Hospital Foundation. 15AB is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Southern Expo LLC. 15AC is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Chorbo Contracting to provide construction services for exterior repair and renovations for Alabama Constitution Village. 15AD is a request for authorization to advertise and fill a budgeted position of general services controls technician at a higher than minimum salary if necessary. 15AE is a request for authorization to advertise and fill position of engineering procurement and contracts assistant pay grade 14 and to fill at steps higher than minimum within the pay grade if necessary.
Madam President.
Mr. Culver.
I'm, I'm sorry. Ms. Reed had requested that we hold 15AA, which was 364, and 15BB, I mean 15AB.
Oh, Ms. Reed is here. I thought she had left. We then...
So if we could hold those instead of consolidation, please ma'am?
Madam President, I'm moved to solidate 15A through C, 15E through G, 15I through L, 15O through X, 15AC, AD, and AE.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to items that have been held. We will begin with item 15D, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute agreement between the City of Huntsville, Alabama and Greyhound Lines, Inc. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Mr. Brown, would you please share with us the details of this?
Yes, ma'am. Just to give you a little bit of history, when we built our new transit building 13 years ago, one of our desires was to have Greyhound as a partner in that building. At that time, they had a long-term lease and we weren't able to work that out. So about a year ago, Greyhound approached us about utilizing our building, our loading area for Greyhound services. So, over that period of a year or so, we've negotiated with them and our public transit manager, John Autry's here, Greyhound representatives are here. They did the yeoman's work along with Bruce Pitts in the city attorney's office. But this agreement essentially grants them the authority to operate out of our building. There'll be some office space that we'll create. There'll be a ticket counter, luggage will be brought in, tickets will be sold. There's also platform space where their buses will pull in, seven or so buses per day. So this gets us a little ways towards a multimodal facility that we wanted initially. We would still love to, at some point, have Amtrak service over at the rail yard and then we'd have, we'd have those three modes together. We'll have taxi stands, places for Uber to pick up along with this Greyhound deal. So I think it's a win-win for us and Greyhound and, and definitely an asset for the public that, that uses our services and Greyhound services.
Great collaboration. Questions? Mr. Keith.
Is this the Greyhound that was now, they're leaving their lease on the corner of...
Monroe.
Yes, sir.
Homes in Monroe. Yeah, yes, sir, that's true. And another benefit of this is to put a nice piece of downtown property back on the real estate market. So that's, that's a plus as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Would this perhaps generate revenues by both of them piggybacking off of each other where we might be able to look at maybe doing some route expansion?
This will generate some additional revenue for the transit department that can be used, used for additional transit services, absolutely.
That's good news.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and I thank our Greyhound partners and welcome them.
Yes, thank you. Great, thank you for collaborating. 15H is an ordinance to correct an error in the legal description of land annexed and described in ordinance number 17-250. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Ms. Nichols.
City Council, this is just a small correction to an ordinance that was adopted at the previous city council meeting. The section that was listed on the application as well as the engineering documentation that was presented by the applicant had the incorrect section listed. It was listed as Section 12 Township 5 South, Range 1 East. That should have read Section 21 and not Section 12, as well as Section 20 was included. There's a small, teeny tiny piece of that particular parcel that is in Section 20, so it was added as a precaution just as well. But other than that, none of the actual description changed outside of the public land survey information.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion carries. 15M is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and John C. Calhoun State Community College for Huntsville Water Pollution Control Collection System Operator Certification Preparatory Course Grade 1C.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Russell, second by the chair. Mr. Cook.
Council members, this is the curriculum that was developed with WPC and Calhoun to come in and train the apprentices we talked about a few moments ago. And the instructor will come in to WPC once a week from August through March and teach these apprentices and probably some other individuals at WPC. And then, when it gets time for the testing, she's going to come in and do six straight days of cramming, getting ready for the test. And she is highly qualified. She's both certified in water and wastewater. They call her the water lady, and we are terribly excited about the curriculum.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cook? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 15N is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and William M. Bame and Associates for Architectural Design Services for the new public safety training facility located on Trianna Boulevard.
Move for approval.
Motion for Mr. Kling.
Second.
Second from Mr. Culver. Mr. Easter.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, this is a contract for architectural and engineering services for a new public training facility that will be located, currently we're looking at the property that's all the way at the end of Trianna. It's just past the steam plant. The, the amount of the contract is 374,850, and that also includes special additional consulting services for this facility, because this is a very unique, this is not like building an office building or school or something. You know, this will be designing fire towers, pump test equipment. There will be some buildings, right now we're looking at, there will probably be a building about 35,000 square foot. But along with that will be other ancillary type of equipment and items on that. We're looking at like it's going to take up about 18 acres of that property in order to complete this. Right now, the preliminary total budget for the whole project is 5.2 million.
Are there any questions for Mr. Easter?
Yes.
Mr. Keith.
Mr. Easter, what is the timeframe on this?
Well, right now, we're just, with this contract, we're going to start the design. This design is probably going to take about 12 months.
The design?
To complete, just the design, yes, sir. This is, once we complete the design, then that's when we will look at the budgeting and look at the construction. But I would expect the construction on this, whenever we do start, to take about 12 months. So it'll, it's a two, it's a two-year process.
I guess my real question, as we discuss this with others, as you have the majority of those individuals right now in the police academy and the fire academy at Johnson, how do they perform the same services at Johnson but then need, why do we need contextual architectural, you know, work for 12 months for a building if they're, if they're really making it out of the Johnson? Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. I, I do understand. I'm not, I can't answer some of the technical tests that the fire department has to do or the police department. Certainly, there's no burn tower, there's no towers to repel off of. You know, there's no equipment out there to run fire truck pump testing. There's, you know, a lot of type of equipment and like that, that's just not up there. So, yeah, that's, you know, I think right now they're doing that offsite, actually out of the, not even in the city. I think they're having to perform that test in South Alabama.
And you, and you said, let me just clarify, you said 12 months alone, just for the contract is to run for 12 months, but it, it usually takes about 12 months for something like this?
Well, this actual contract is good for, actually, for the duration of the whole project, which includes the construction.
Oh, okay.
That way, you know, they can also monitor the construction as, as the official architect.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Keith? Any other questions for anyone else?
And I might just say, Mr. Keith, you know, we are making due at Johnson and making due with the property that we already have to, to do the job we have. And it's really turned out to be a nice, nice home, but it, like Mr. Easter said, it does not have all the things that you would really want to have, to have a comprehensive training facility there. And you wouldn't want us to do everything that we do to have a comprehensive training station there, like, like the burns, the controlled burns and some of the things. The neighborhood is, does not need to be too close to neighborhood.
I absolutely agree, ma'am.
As I understand it, there also is some potential for other cities to use this for their training, which could generate revenue for us.
That is correct. Yes, in the meetings that we've had so far, this also could be a way of the city to have, generate revenue off the facility. That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item, thank you, Mr. Easter. 15Y is a resolution authorizing city attorney to settle a claim of new vision United Pentecostal Church, claim number 16-120. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion on this, but I would caution you that this is a, a claim, and so we need to limit our discussion. Is there a specific question that someone had for the attorney?
I can provide a general information. It's fairly innocuous. It involves basically our sanitation trucks turning around in a parking lot of this church over a space of a long number of years. The church doesn't use our sanitation services, and so over the course of that period of time, some damage was done to the upper end of that parking lot, and a claim was made and, and agreement reached. So, happy ending to that situation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for that with regard to this? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15Z is a resolution rescinding resolution number 17-289, which passed by the City Council of the City of Huntsville on April 13, 2017 regarding the vacation of utility and drain easement for Thurton Park One LLC. Chair moves for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Who would address this, Ms. Nichols?
I can address it.
Okay, Mr. Riley, thank you.
This involves a, a, a situation, a rescinding of a resolution to vacate a utility and drain easement. And the reason needed for rescinding it is that there was an incorrect name of the grantee and an incorrect legal description on the previous one. So it is being, we're asking the council to rescind it, and as I understand it, it will be replaced by the vacation easement at 16A1.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 16AA is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Huntsville Hospital Foundation. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Ms. Ivy, could you please explain this?
Yes, ma'am. This is a lease agreement between the city and Huntsville for the hospital, hospital authority for a social event using the Butler Green on June 3rd.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 16AB is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Southern Expo LLC. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. Ms. Ivy.
Yes, ma'am. This is an agreement also with, for the use of Joe Davis Stadium's parking lot for a carnival to run May 23rd, I'm sorry, May 1st through May 30th.
Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes all our business items. Moving to 16, legal department items, transaction, transaction. 16A, vacation easements, ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drain easements, Lot Track One, Chase Creek Park, Southwest intersection of Highway 72 and Moores Mill Road. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr., motion by Mr. Culver, second by Mr. Kling. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17 is non-roster communicate, that concludes our business. 17 is non-roster communications from the public. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come to the microphone, give us your name and your address. You will have three minutes to address the council. Mr. Timberlake.
Thank you, Madam President. Ralph Tumalay, 2117 Atkins Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, 35810. I rise to express my consternation at the fact that you would appoint someone to the board of the Huntsville Hospital Board, Ms. Bonacani, without honoring my request to know about the other names that were sent in, that is, under the auspices of their own bylaws. To that end, I think that it's a shame and a disgrace that you would continue to appoint people to those boards for long periods. This is not Ms. Bonacani's first appointment to this board. This, Ms. Bonacani is well aware of the numerous times I have entreated her and that board to make themselves transparent. This seemed to be a tent upon the brand of the City of Huntsville that you will condone the non-transparency of government officials. I think the City of Huntsville has a right to know what is going on on their behalf so that they can exercise their due diligence in asking you to do what they feel is in their best interest. To do anything less is a shame and a disgrace. I asked for my information while I go under the auspices of US, of five, USC 552, and under the Alabama Open Records Law, after all. My request was summarily dismissed. I was treated unceremoniously, to which I am deeply aggrieved and remorseful for the action of this wonderful body to whom I have the utmost confidence in seeing that justice for all, that all voices will be treated the same, as long as they conduct themselves in a proper and orderly manner. I do believe I have done so. You have not honored me. In fact, you have dishonored me. I now respectfully ask that in this meeting, that my request be known to the public as to whether you will honor it or not, and the reason for not honoring it, if you so desire to exercise that most unpouchable attitude of not honoring a citizen's request. Thank you.
Mr. Timberlake, I think we are looking at, I don't think there's going to be a problem getting those names for you, and we will have those for you in the council office.
Madam President? Ralph and I, you know, have had some good discussions, and I'm, you know, I've tried to be responsive to the issues that he's raised, and hopefully I'll be able to do that in the future. I did check with not just the previous city attorney, but with our current city attorney, as well as a friend of mine who's an attorney who just informally did a little research at my request. And Huntsville Hospital is a separate legislative act that they come under, and they are different from what we have. And basically, after having it looked at by three different attorneys, they are, you know, you may or may not like it, but they are in compliance with the, with what the state law requires of them, because, you know, I certainly would try to get you whatever I could, but I did find that out for whatever it may be worth, Ralph, but I did want to let you know that that was looked into.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Ladana Houston. My address is one ninety-six Jeff Road, Huntsville, Alabama, three five eight zero six. I appeal to this council and to the mayor and to all the citizens of Huntsville for their emergency intervention. My life is in danger. I am being stalked by a man that I believe to be the retired deputy police chief of Huntsville. I have prepared a packet here.
Madam President, I...
Ma'am, ma'am, we...
We need, we need to be advised by council on this. These are serious charges being talked about.
And, and we...
I'm appealing only for my life. I won't speak any further.
Ma'am, ma'am, we would like to have you have perhaps a private conversation afterwards. This is not something that needs to be addressed, either for your sake or anyone else's in public, so we will, if you'll...
If I can just say that my, my life, though, I just want to...
And for that reason, we would like you to remain here, and we will have you talk with the police chief.
Yes, sir.
Else, who wishes to address the council? Ms. Reed.
Jackie Reed. I guess I left out some things a while ago. The lady that came in here about Pulaski Pike, she had called me, I get more calls than you all do, I bet, at my house, trying to tell you what's going on. She said she couldn't get anybody to answer, and I said, "I sent them to you." I said, "Use my name if you have to, but come call them. That's their job." But anyway, she had been calling me about this. Appointment, I see you appointed a big developer on industrial development board. I hope they're not going to be building any of that property out there in Cummins Research Park, where you put all these real estate people on there. You need to put some more people, common sense people, and get these developers off all these boards out here. I see you load them up with that, and that's kind of not good. I did ask about city hall over here. We emptied this building. I don't know about the master plan, but this city hall needs to be put right back exactly where it's at. We've got enough room. If we can save some, some of the marble on the bottom floor, put it back, it's in a beautiful location. I don't know why you want to take it away from the courthouse. I don't want to know why you want to stretch the city, maybe some of your friends on some property or something, I don't know, but if y'all move this courthouse, I hope everyone will get beat at the next election, because you got plenty of room. You built over on Jefferson Street, you let that man move right out in the street. I couldn't decide who let that condo person take that lane over there in that street. That's still debatable as to who okayed that. Was it transportation? Was it you all? Or was it traffic? Or was it zoning and advance board? Nobody has an answer. He didn't own that street. We just give it to him. So, you know, there's just things like that. The golf course, they want to keep it, find a way to help them keep it. I think it's a thing that we need to do. I didn't find out, are you going to buy the bus station property now that we're locating, taking the bus station away? Do y'all need that property for something? And if you're going to buy it, when are you going to buy it? I'm sure you are. I mean, God hands me this stuff. I can read you ahead of time, sort of, kind of. He hands me all this stuff, and I don't have to come down here and bring it up. And I need to know the price of that bar that was built over there that goes into that bottom part of that bank. And Mayor, tell me sort of a little about this property over here. The master plan hadn't been okayed yet for that city hall, as far as I'm concerned. If you have, you've done it behind closed doors. I hope that don't happen, because the public needs to hear about what you're going to do with this place right here. I love you, all of you men, still. Tell you women, Happy Mother's Day, and I love you. Thank you.
And Ms. Reed, we're going to have a number of public meetings in the future weeks here to discuss those plans, both for the comprehensive downtown plan and the plans for city hall, so please stay tuned. We'll be talking about those in detail, and have lots of opportunity for public input.
Madam...
Pastor Johnson.
Madam President, if, if I could address the Pulaski statement again, Ms. Reed, the only reason there was a delay is that we had to wait to meet with the developers. We were uncertain of what was going on. And again, I personally walked Canard, Judd, and Stag Run, talking to everybody on the street, that we were addressing the issues that happened with the property off Pulaski. And there will be a letter sent out to every home that touches that property early as the mail can get there next week.
Thank you, Mr. Keith, for clarifying that. Pastor Johnson.
Pastor TC Johnson, eighteen hundred, Bartman Drive. I spoke earlier relative to disparity in the way people are treated, not want to go into their personal business. That's not what I raised the issue for. I was saying, it makes us look as though we leaders handle black and white officers differently. That's what the issue was, and that's what I wish would be considered. But since I've been kind of like treated this way, I guess I'll have to find other redress to make that particular complaint. We also talked about, asked a question about, when is an impound vehicle considered abandoned by law because a present person is charging after five days, is saying he's charging a fee for the vehicle being abandoned after being five days impounded? And that needs some clarity, because it doesn't jive with the contract. I heard what the deputy chief said, but I have the contract. And I like to read item one, yeah, one A. It says, "Storage space shall be provided for impounded motor vehicles and impounded items within the city limits." Part of the center says, "Separate lots shall be used to store generally impounded vehicles and objects and evidentiary impound vehicles." However, all lots must be adjoining. In no event shall it be permissible to store general impounds and evidentiary together." Part B says, "There's a required minimum for both plays, that lot to be divided." Now, after we went on a while, I see that we're going to have a meeting that's going to adjust that, and I'm asking, is it going to be right to change the contract in the middle? After we've given the contract, then we go change it to fit what the contractor can do, as opposed to what the contractor can't do. And so, one question I wanted to answer deals with, when is a vehicle that's been impounded by our city considered abandoned, and the person can be charged some abandoned fee? And the other question I'm seeing is, this particular contract says that the contractor has to provide a lot for evidentiary and for general empowerment. It was signed in our contract. If we're providing, as a city, another lot, then why? Because we're paying someone else to do that for us. Thank you, President.
Mr. Riley, are you in a position to answer that, or will this be something that you will review in the course of that, your, your work with Ms. Sargent?
I will have to, to look into the statutory information that is requested in regard to the length of time before a vehicle is considered to be abandoned. And of course, we received some quotes from what is a very extensive contract. It's my understanding in regard to the evidentiary lot that the police department has itself created its own lot, and that would be something that would be beneficial to the general public, and they wouldn't be incurring cost, according to my understanding, to an independent person out here under this lot. So that would be my explanation. Again, I'll be happy to look into it and get a definitive answer.
And when, as you do the investigation to get answers for, for councilman Culver, if you'll just look at that, that would be great. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Move to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us tonight.